Home meeting in order. Please rise and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January fourteenth meeting of the Redback Village Board. First item on the agenda is our county legislator Joel Typer.
Thank you, sir. Happy New Year. Thank you, Joel. Wanted to invite everybody to the Dutchess County Legislature this Thursday at five o'clock sharp. If you want to testify, you really got to get there, you know, a couple minutes early. It's in the legislative chambers on the sixth floor of the county office building, twenty-two Market Street in Kipsey. There's a resolution that many of us are sponsoring, pushing for the same thing that the Elsie County Legislature voted unanimously for last month, which is just asking for state legislation to be passed for an opt-out option on these smart meters. I just sort of recently got up to speed on this issue. If you go to takebackyourpower.net or stopsmartmetersny.com, you can see, but there's a lot, a lot of different health concerns. And all the resolution asks is, you know, for Dutchess County to push for state legislation so that, you know, homeowner, you don't have to have these things rammed down your throat, you don't have to have a smart meter on your property. And like I said, it was unanimous in the Elsie County Legislature last month. I'm hoping, there's about eight of us sponsoring this resolution. And it's this Thursday, five p.m. sharp, please get there a little bit early if you want to testify on that. I know Linda Sowers used to be a member of the town board. It's a big issue for her. She's written a letter to all twenty-five of us. You can contact us in the county legislature at countylegislators@dutchessny.gov. If you email, that goes to all twenty-five of us. It dumps automatically into our emailing boxes. The Dutchess County Jail Administrator George Crom just let me know that sixty-three percent of the current Dutchess County jail inmates are either in there for misdemeanors or nonviolent felonies. So, this is one of the ways that I'm trying to stop this fuel tax hike that's just around the corner in March. Unfortunately, seven and a half million dollars hit on senior citizens, working families in Dutchess County. And we would not have to spend eight, nine, ten million dollars a year housing out our Dutchess County jail inmates to kingdom come if we were actually looking at the recommendations from the Dutchess County Criminal Justice Council that came out a little over a year ago for the women, the mentally ill, the youth. But like I said, as of December twenty-sixth, and I got the information a few days after that, as of one day after Christmas, sixty-three percent of the Dutchess County jail inmates are charged only with misdemeanors or nonviolent felonies. And eighty percent of Dutchess County jail inmates haven't even gone to trial yet. So, just so you're focusing on. I'm doing a forum on different ways to try to avoid this looming March county fuel tax hike. That's going to be Monday, the twen- I'm sorry, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth of January. Tuesday, the twenty-eighth of January, just across the way at Town Hall at the English Market Street. Another way to save, Dutchess County taxpayers, right now we're spending about seven million dollars a year. The county subsidy basically paying subsidizing poverty wages for people who are working at Walmart, people that are working at Kmart, people that are working at McDonald's and Burger King. Those folks have a right to decent housing and, you know, Medicaid and Family Health Plus and Child Health Plus. I'm not suggesting we take those benefits away, but if you didn't know, Walmart and McDonald's, they teach their employees, they train their employees how to get government benefits because those workers are paid garbage wages. And who makes up the difference? We taxpayers make up the difference. And if you extrapolate the Westchester County report from two thousand six, Dutchess County, we're spending seven million dollars a year on corporate welfare for McDonald's and Burger King and Walmart and Kmart and the rest of it. So, that's another way we don't have to have this fuel tax hike. I was also recently told by somebody who was on the board of directives for the Dutchess County Resource Recovery Agency that the reason why the subsidy for the RRA is less this year is because apparently there was a drawdown recently of the RRA's reserve fund, making it look as if things are so much more cost-effective and efficient. That doesn't seem to be the case. Why would anybody try to do that? Because I believe as of this June, the county's contract with Covanta, who runs the county incinerator, runs out. So, buyer beware, buyer remorse, caveat emptor. There are some things going on with Resource Recovery Agency incinerator. Again, if we move towards recycling in town, we don't have to have the incinerator around for another twenty years. Couple of things real briefly. The reason why you can go to Stop &amp; Shop and see prices on some of the items, Dutchess County is one of the last counties in the state that has item pricing. There are people in county government for many, many years, a decade or so, who have been trying to rip away this consumer protection. It's recently come to my attention that some new members, a new member or two of the county legislature sort of signaled support for, let's rip away this protection. And so, I'm sort of, believe it or not, maybe you can believe it, I'm sort of the biggest pain in the neck in the county government when it comes to stopping the drive to rip away item pricing. So, if you care about being able to go into the Stop &amp; Shop or any supermarket in Dutchess County and be able to see prices on the item as opposed to trusting the scanners and trying to memorize, you know, seven, ten, twenty prices, you need to contact all twenty-five of us in county legislature because I'm afraid that after a decade of hard work of me fighting the machine on this, I'm afraid the machine may win. The only other thing I was going to say is last Thursday's New York Times, I had an editorial about Cuomo budget, a lot of good things in the Cuomo State Address. Half a billion dollars in the state tax cuts. Why is that primarily for wealthy folks? If Governor Cuomo has money for that, where is the money going to come from for property tax relief, for mandated relief, for municipalities, you know, cities, towns, villages, like the Village of Rantain? So, I've been working with the Fiscal Policy Institute for twenty years. It blew my mind when the Fiscal Policy Institute was referenced in last Thursday's New York Times editorial. I urge you to go to their website, fiscalpolicy.org. Check out the Better Choice for NY.org. There's a massive coalition all across the state working on progressive taxation. And there's a toll-free number for Governor Cuomo, all the Republicans and Democrats in the state legislature. It's eight-seven-seven-two-five-five-nine-four-one-seven. Thank you, sir. And ladies and gentlemen, I got to run to the Clinton Town Board meeting at the same time. Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. Next item on the agenda is the Department's report, wastewater treatment.
For December wastewater treated, three point six two million gallons, gallons of sludge processed, forty-five thousand three hundred gallons, pounds of sludge processed, five thousand nine hundred ninety pounds. Not much new to report. We are replacing a generator, which is the last big capital item in our five-year capital plan. So, we have the standby there and we're disnailing old one and they're going to replace a new one right now. So, I had a question about if we're going to post these other used items for sale, should we include the old generator? Well, this is probably posting.
I have to, I have to also, I have to, I would notice that I would place the fuel in the furnace with some material on it.
Give me the information, Joel. What we need is, you know, specifications of what key sentence items are. We'll advertise them short because of course we have to pay per line, but as long as the EMA has the specifications in the bread, bottom of the bid, call for specs. Get that stuff to us.
This is all a restricted legal requirement, right? We can't put stuff in Autotrader or anything because I noticed that some of those ads are kind of on clamors.
No, no, we have to have a time to bid.
Probably not the best, the way to get the best price. Some of these items. Okay. That's all we got for now.
Thanks. Water department, Mike?
We treated eleven million four hundred seventy-two thousand gallons. Just finished on Saturday the ceiling insulation. And we had an inspection from the Dutchess County Health Department. We have no major issues, just one small thing on the controls and hydraulics, which we fixed ourselves. Water distribution systems, I, we had a six-inch trunk line which broke up on six, about six modern road. When we cut the line out, it was pretty, well, cracked up and highly virtuated inside. We also replaced a leaking hydrant on the Rock and Garden ready, you know, the Garden qualities. I received a set of high-resolution tax maps, similar to ones we did in, for the village for Rock Cliff. And Tom and I have started, we do a conference once a week, we meet for an hour and a half, two hours, to superimpose field data on, under these tax maps. And we have a mapping of these of Rock Cliff. We will talk to Dutchess County Planning Department about GIS, see if we can do a GIS inventory of our mines, distribution lines and the drainage system in the Blue Trans, the water lines and hydrons and the, and the water valves and also the wastewater manholes and so on. Which we have pretty good documentation, but I think they want to have everything, they would like to have anything on a, in a digital form. So, I'm starting discussions with them. Financial side, we have, finally.
All right, just one question. Can you get there? I'm working off of this.
This is Tom's. Yeah, I talk about that when I talk about the accomplishments. It's like in the second part of my presentation. The one that says stay with the water department.
Where are you now? My cell. You started, you started out here with the treatment, Joel?
Yeah, yeah. No, no. This is, this is, this is this month, this is. That was, EMA tells me that we have our capital projects all in place now. What we have to do yet is transfer money into the, into the capital accounts and establish some kind of a mechanism or mechanics, how to do that, so Tom can charge the equipment and the work that we're doing into this capital account. Electric power reduction initiative, we had actually not a good month in terms of solar panels in December. We had a lot of rain, we had a lot of snow and a lot of sun. So, we just got eighty-six dollars. I had the same problem in my own house. And I'm delighted to have this going on because of Christmas lights and, and, and hours. So, it was not a good month for that. I had a number of discussions with Central Hudson on replacing some of the mercury breaker lights, replacing them with high-pressure sodium lights. They stopped sometime in December, replacing them. At the time, they had done about a hundred, seventy-one out of a hundred and fifteen to be at. I asked them and I wasn't quite sure how they wanted to proceed, but I, the latest message I got from, from Central Hudson, they turned over the salary rate programs and agreed on what they placed, which I think is probably in the April, May timeframe, when you don't have to go to, to calls, but they're going to do the rest of it. Next item, I wanted to just sort of give the state of the water department, essentially highlights and accomplishments of what we have done in the last, in the last year. And I have a summary heated of the amount of gallons that we did in two thousand thirteen, it was a hundred and sixty-three, a hundred and forty-six million gallons. And also, I've been looking at water losses over, over the time, over the last two years, particularly this past year. And it looks like all the losses that we have are about twenty percent, which, twenty-one six percent, which is less than about thirty million gallons. Of that, unknown losses, about twenty-three million gallons, that made the difference between the, the, all the losses, the unknown losses is when we do hydrant cleaning and we have water line breaks and, and these things. I come to almost to the conclusion, the reason we are losing all that water is not because of big losses someplace, but it is because of, you know, getting killed by small cuts, you know, all over, all over the village here and my dad. I mean, we have service lines that go through the individual houses and I have a number of them downstairs that are perforated and they were done by, essentially galvanized pipes. The galvanized pipes corrode on the outside and they corrode on the inside and they have tuberculosis, major tuberculosis on the inside. And since we have kind of porous soil here, so we really don't know, you know, when we're losing water. And it may be, if we lose a hundred gallons on one of the service lines, we've got a new one out there or something like that. You know, we can, we can lose a lot of water. And we, we had a couple of instances last week where we found, while the place, a bunch of two of them, we looked for one and there were two actually. Actually, we had one on one side of the street and the other side of the street. We did a lot of work in the, in the water plant. We did security and maintenance in the last year. Built a fence and put internal security in there. We scraped and cleaned and repainted all the pipes in the pipe gallery, both in the main plant and in the pump station. And just last week, we re insulated the annex. We had a severe infestation of squirrels there. We found dead squirrels and we found probably a thousand grats in the insulation there. It was a real mess, but it's all done. Essentially, Tom and I and Pat and these are also, we rebuilt, updated the water plant emergency response plan, which is a large, about thirty-five pages or so. We did a complete update on that. We provided detailed engineering plans for.
Okay, can I interrupt one second? As far as the emergency response plan? Probably leave it ID'd to make sure Henry Campbell has a copy of that.
We, we made, Tom and I provided detailed engineering plans for the water distribution system, including inventories of, and the location of the major trunk lines, the water valves and the fire hydrants. Tom responded to about four hundred and eight requests for a waterline markup from UFPO. I don't know what this UFPO means, but I know what it does. What it does essentially is, it's a, it's a central point where people come in, they want to dig in the ground, they say, what are, what, you know, what services do we have in the ground here? And one of the things they get back to Tom is, is we wanted to mark out water lines if somebody wants to go digging in the street.
Oh, okay.
So, that's what it's, and I was.
It's a big New York thing, that's what it is. Before they do any excavating, they have to, utility markings.
And water is wealth and, I was advised of a number of, four hundred and eight in one year. It's a huge amount.
Do you give me any indication of nowhere? I mean, four, right off the top of my head, I think of the gardens.
I don't know, but I don't remember.
Well, when we plant the trees, we request that too, so.
You do?
Yeah.
Ah, so, so.
Because we have a backup deal on our property. And so, we do about forty, forty-five a year. Well, how is, forty-five? Only ten percent of that.
But actually, it is, it is quite a workload. Be satisfied, three hundred and thirty-two work orders. Now, what it means is that every time something has to be done in the water business, Pat writes out a work order, I would say that half of these, opposed to half of these, has to be, we're going to put in, we're going to water leaders in there or for finding, for finding building, when people sell their houses and buy new ones. We flow and pressure tested fourteen points in the village last year and I did one today as a matter of fact, right on West Market Street, where people tried to build a new world, a new complex. And we found that we have, and I had worked with Andrew Campbell and that he gave me some of the background to, in terms of the ISO requirements and so on. In April, we completed the south passage main trunk line, which was a major project, cost about a hundred and eighty K. Essentially, we rerouted the line that went under the last, we hung it from, from the bridge and moved it to this, to the west side of the bridge, on the downstream side of the bridge. We replaced what, twelve antique fire items, antique, I mean, they were from the public. They, they said nineteen, eighteen, ninety-five on there, that's, that's the patent age, I think, that probably from the nineteen thirties and nineteen forties and so on. So, we replaced twelve of these. We have another thirty-two to go. Half of them will be in Rock Cliff. There are a lot of these old items down there and we're going to do that in the next three years. We placed twelve distribution valves for the control of our distribution system and we activated six of them. We found, given near to, that they were changed because of some other noise for the India. We installed a hundred and thirty Neptune radio read, whatever it is, which are the latest ones, where you just will drive by and take, take the reading on. We have another six hundred of those, so we think we need about four years or so to do the rest of them. They're about two hundred, ten dollars a piece. We converted, we converted the last four on the other accounts. We have four accounts here where people just built, built the minimum amount and so on. So, I got, need to see each fellow in order and some of them are kind of tricky. We have the two hundred and three new property owners, I was just saying, in Redback. Now, by news, there are people selling houses and a new person comes in and everything that happens, you have to, have to go in and take a meter readings and find a bill and then get them, have a new bill. And many instances, we replaced them. The whole, so, whole water meters in there, we replaced them. Forty-two of these, two hundred and three were transmittal accounts. Forty of the forty-two were in the gardens, two in the, in the town someplace. We have a state audit of the water department, which we have preliminary, we have a preliminary reading on it and we had a few minor issues, a lot of them were already resolved and we can play it to a final meeting. As far as personnel is, personnel changes are related. We had one man retired in June and we had gotten one Tony Father from the Hydrate Department, who just finished his grade two water plant exam and still haven't gotten his certificate yet, but it should, it should be in the mail soon. We hired a new journeyman, so to speak, Brian Alex, in mid-September as a water plant operator training and he can afford to get his license sometime in September of next year. Last item is about staffing and productivity. And all the items that I enumerated before, the water plant, actually is operated and monitored twelve, thirteen and a half hours a day, seven days a week. And that comes up to about twelve eight-hour shifts and we do that with four people. I think we should really congratulate our night act, our water police here for putting just an outstanding job and getting a new work point. And that is the end of the state of the water department. The water department is more.
We need more to go, yeah. Thank you, Mike. Good job. Thanks, Ayes. Okay, next item is fire department. Pete?
We'll start with the call report for December. In terms of EMS, there were twenty-one calls in the town, fifteen in the village, for a total of thirty-six. For fire calls, there were fourteen in the town, five in the village, for a total of nineteen. Motor vehicle accidents, there were three in the town, two in the village, for a total of five. So, the monthly totals in the town were thirty-eight, total in the village twenty-two, monthly total of sixty. The grand total of the year to date, which includes November and December, is eighty-two calls in the town, forty-seven in the village, for a grand total of one twenty-nine. To note there, the mutual aid calls for the month, there were five to Hillside, one to Rock Cliff and five others outside the town. Year to date, mutual aid calls is nineteen. Moving on to membership, there are, from the last roster, there are forty-eight active firefighters and a grand total of a hundred and five for membership in the fire company. New members, we have, I'd like to make the motion to approve Sheldon Teeter as a probationary EMT and firefighter.
Any discussion? Hold up and favor. Aye. Vote.
Also a membership, I'd just like to mark, the fire department lost two life members in the last month or so, or last couple of weeks. First was Gus Moran, who was a forty-four year, forty-four years of service and I saw that he was a founding member of the Rescue Squad. And the last one just the other day was Fred Bonhuizen, also a life member of the fire department.
That's okay.
I just have one other question related to the hydrants that's kind of like a, bring the water highway of our department together. Question being, the responsibility of shoveling them out, and we touched base on that a little bit. Maybe we can work on some kind of plan. I know the last time we had a storm, there were some guys in the fire department that went out and, and a number of hours shoveling them.
Yeah, maybe we can figure out how we do that genetically, I hope. Because I know Tom has done it in the past, some of them, and then we have to time, but I think we say he can maybe have a certain area where he can do it because of, what about Rock Cliff, Rock Cliff, is that in part of this?
Yeah, definitely.
Well, that would be the town highway department?
That's your question.
Well, I, I will, I will check with.
Well, our, our highway department doesn't maintain anything in Rock Cliff. Our water department, of course, doesn't prepare with that. The fire district falls under the Rock Cliff Fire District, so that's a district of the town.
Let me talk to Kathy, let me talk to Kathy and see if she's going with that. Outside of that.
How many hydrants are there?
In, I, I think it's about thirty or forty. In one of the units, about over a hundred.
Well, that one would be coordinated with the Rock Cliff Fire District and the, and the town highway department, but we're more concerned about the village ones. Because even in the protective district, that would go, I mean, to the town highway department as well.
In the land drive and places like that.
Yeah.
Well, I, let's figure out.
Especially if they have the equipment out, you know, they're, they're, they have a skid steer out here in the.
We use the shop, we, 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 we,
That works too.
Well, how quick would you want these shoveled out?
Well, a long, no.
No, I mean, in the future, you know, a storm and these guys are plowing the roads and maybe for a day they're plowing the roads and the next day, bottom of the day.
And on that note, we would also certainly welcome and appreciate any help from homeowners that have a fire hydrant in their front yard or close proximity.
I do, Mike.
How we shovel this. Thank you for that.
Personally, I think we should be along with Coby, hold over the adjacent to the fire hydrant, responsible for clearing it. God forbid if the things covered up and frozen and their house catches on fire, they're really be cursing themselves after that.
And on that same note, when we install new hydrants or put in those flags on them, where, where do those come from? Because I did, I had that question and I looked around and I noticed some of them have it.
At one point, from what I understood, when we replaced one, we put it, we tried to put a new one in and sometimes it becomes a little problem because we can't open up to the, the, the lid, not the lid, we kind of, I think, and not, not.
You're not talking about the color of it, right?
No, 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 no.
The flag, the marks of it is buried in snow.
Yeah, well, they used to do that before. Somebody did, oh, it's the fire department or the.
We had pretty much all of them.
Nobody's doing it now.
Nobody's doing it now.
I would think maybe when the new ones go in.
Like, it doesn't have to be new, it can be an existing one.
No, I mean, it's when they're putting in new fire hydrants, maybe it's a good time just to install a flag with it, so it doesn't have to be done later.
So, it's there all year round?
So, they have big projects to take on, huh?
They're all, they're, they're, they're all the time.
They're attached to the fire.
That, sometimes after a while.
Well, that's an option for the new hydrants?
It's not an option, you have to leave them.
Some of these exist, you, you, look at the ones with the flags on them and there's a metal flag attached to it and it's got a round thing like this and it bolts onto the fire hydrant.
And it's more than that's, that's, is this the right word?
It's not just like a little stick that's put in the ground.
Oh, not with leaf piles too, you get one bigger than leaves.
Well, I want to hide them from my house, but there's no flag.
One of the grounds, the, we don't, people want to get you naked out.
Yeah.
One of the grounds with these, with these cases, as I was told by, by, by Tom, is when they try to open up the hydrants, the things are in the way and then they spring them down and then they back up again because sometimes these nuts are very hard to take off.
That's why they're having our fat.
That's why they're having off. They break off after long.
You know, you're going to work this out?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're working on that. Because there's maps of all the hydrants, right?
Yeah.
So, that's it? Street department. Howie?
Okay, Mike's report says plowing and sanding has become life in the village this past month. They did snow removal down here in the village downtown area on. They did snow removal down here in the village downtown area on the eighteenth of December. Dave's tree service took down and removed a dangerous tree, I believe it was on the corner of Livingston and Beach Street. They used the Bobcat, we bought a new Bobcat a few months ago to help us out with the taking the snow off the sidewalks. And it says, "We used the Bobcat this past storm in the firehouse and the police station and it worked very well." Park benches have been restored and new wood put where needed and they have been stained. The guys brought the park benches into the highway garage and we've been working on them for the last couple of weeks. Truck six broke down and had to be sent out to International for fixed, to get fixed. The Bobcat trailer was picked, it says it will be picked up this week, it was picked up yesterday and the highway department plans on using the Bobcat to do some stump grinding starting tomorrow. Potholes are being filled with coal patch. The front axle on two-wheel-drive backhoe is being rebuilt in-house. Four-wheel-drive backhoe will be next with the front-end cylinders that leak and will be rebuilt and then removed, removed, washed and painted. Yeah, okay. Then remove the rust and then paint it. The septic tank at the highway garage is now being pumped every two weeks. Mike says he noticed when it was last pumped on January tenth, water was running from the, where the riser meets the tank. And he says that riser was recently installed.
That's what we, that's the work we did to improve it and the guy that cleaned the tank out was the one that should have worked, did you say something to him?
Well, the guy that cleaned the tank out says the water's coming from the bottom of the tank. So we have many different reports coming from the top, from the bottom.
That should be under warranty, that riser shouldn't leak.
Yeah.
Because it was only about nine months ago.
Right.
I called it.
You're dying. But what I said to Mike, next time it's pumped out, maybe Jim, you and I can go out there and kind of see where the water's coming in from.
We're not gonna see where the water's coming in from. Empty the tank, it's not gonna listen to what my theory is here. We have this recent event, the ground is frozen, we've got no water penetrating, all right? And we got all that water dumps off that roof and it's probably a severe pond issue and we have snow and ice and all of that stuff and this thing's being infiltrated from ground up. You know? If it's only being pumped once a month now, all of a sudden it's two, he had to do it in two weeks.
Right.
It's during these storm events we recently had and it's because of all of this rain we've had and the water running off the roof and nowhere for the water to go.
And then supposedly all that's sealed left though, so the riser work you did is all there.
Well, he's, he says it's coming from the bottom, he said he saw it coming from the bottom.
Well, that's what he was gonna say, because he did it.
Right. But the point is...
I don't understand, how can the water be coming from the bottom unless there's a crack or a hole in the tank?
Because he says this was not one-piece tank.
It's like those two-piece tanks, it's a seam in the middle.
Right.
So it's not coming from the bottom.
That's what he says. He said he saw, what's his name?
Yeah, I understand. It would be home from the middle.
There's a seam down the bottom.
It'd be in the middle.
It'd be in the middle of the tank.
There's, from what I understand, there's a seam on the bottom and a seam on the top.
Tell him next time he's there, call us, but he's gotta be there on the day I'm available until I can tell him.
You can call me too, I'd like to just...
If I'm not available that day, somebody's gotta go look. This is ridiculous.
But Jim's right, I think they're correct.
Yeah, but this goes on, why do we have to pump it every month? And most of it's...
Because it's not, it's not designed to leach anything out, Hallie. This, this thing was always designed... Yeah, exactly.
Water coming from the outside of the tank inside somehow?
We don't know that. This is all theoretical, we don't know what the problem is and we haven't told them what the problem is. Everybody says there's no problem with it, everybody said, "Okay, well, the riser is gonna fix it," but we still have the problem.
We fix the connections.
Deckers said, Deckers said that the...
Yeah, we fix the connection, there's some problems.
Deckers said that the tank wasn't leaking from the system. We have not been able to diagnose accurately what the problem is.
Can we put some kind of flow meter on the main discharge?
We can't, they can't find the shut-off valve. We can't put a meter on the water line because they can't find the local shut-off valve.
We'll put a meter on the, on the discharge somehow. It must exist somewhere.
We don't have a discharge.
It's like, it's a four-inch line.
Choose the tank, you mean?
Yeah, know exactly how many gallons they're going in, so we should definitely know if it's groundwater.
Get a meter for four-inch line?
My expertise, I think, has...
He's probably got one herself.
Well, it's a separate tank, it's not wastewater.
You don't want to pay for a four-inch meter, it gets, it has a lot of money.
Plus it's got particles you want for...
What I'm suggesting here is that the next time it has to be pumped, somebody's gotta be out there and take it up.
I told Mike to call us next time he's gonna have it pumped.
Should I call him and say, "Hey, can we take the riser's leaking, can you take..."
Yeah, yeah, see what he says. He's gonna say it's coming from the bottom.
You can tell him it's from the bottom.
That's what he told me. Okay, I just want to report on Saturday, there was a drain clog on Livingston Street, you don't remember that house there? It had a called union called the...
Livingston Street?
Or Chestnut Street, sorry, Chestnut Street.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four Chestnut Street. Jim and I went there and we, Jim diagnosed correctly that the drain was clogged by ice, so we had to open up the storm drain and chop it up and we got the thing flowing after a couple of hours. We had the highway crew come in and lift up the...
We had to get the backhoe and the chain in order to get the grate off the thing. It was iced up and frozen in there.
And it was rare, a snow drive or a...
No.
Chestnut Street. Basically what had happened was the upstream side, okay, the water was pounding on that side and flowing through the pipe very slowly and then over on the downstream side or the south side of Chestnut Street, there's a catch basin. And then there's pipes that discharge from that catch basin and those, the entrances to those were all iced up. So the little bit of water that was coming through from the north side was perking up out of the storm drain, running down and then flooding his driveway out. And of course, that storm drain wasn't handling the water, so it was starting running in his garage. So we got there and we got the ice chopped out and that relieved the pressure and the water gone out and then the water from the north side drained out after about two and a half hours.
So how are we gonna fix this?
Well, the problem was, we thought that it would be covered by chips money and we don't, don't have it in the budget.
We don't have it in the budget, the only way we're gonna fix it is if we have money in the budget for it. So we're gonna look at that and we'll go for a budget.
Do we have something about thirty-six thousand dollars?
Money back to the chips, I don't think we get the money.
Huge chips money for it, unless we...
Is this the area entire?
Not just that section where the...
What if we just opened it up like it is, a ditch on both sides of that area, just to see how it works?
You don't want to do that.
That's what it was.
People complained, as I said, they were afraid that children would fall in there with the water and all kinds of stuff and that's why they took it back. That's what I remember.
We could...
We have to, you have to look at our budget this year and see if we can put any money in for it.
We could talk, there's only five or six property owners. I think I spoke to one of them, he didn't want it to be opened up.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. Well, we have this list, but you guys wanna add to it, the list of items that you want to put for sale, so...
What I want you guys to do then is make a resolution conditional upon the other items being added to it so that we don't have to wait or have another special meeting in order to go out. So we need a motion to put these items out to bid in a second and a moment.
I made a motion to put these surplus items out for bid, in a second?
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who's, who's gonna drive this, Howie?
Who's gonna drive what?
We'll get information.
Please say.
Me.
Jim?
Yeah. Who's gonna resume my submission to the newspaper?
Okay, the other thing I want to talk about is the garbage removal from the four areas here that we have, the village hall, the water treatment plant, the wastewater plant, and the highway garage. Now, last month I had the wrong bid, the Welsh sanitation is the state bid. So I'd like to make the motion to...
Make a motion to rescind the previous.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the previous award, the bid to waste management.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So, Howie?
Now, I'd like to make the motion to approve the bid from Welsh Sanitation Service, which is a state contract pricing to install these containers at these four locations and the monthly charges are as follows.
Do I read them off?
Okay, the, well, village hall for one-point-five yard is forty-seven fifty-two, this is a monthly charge. The water treatment plant for one-point-five yard container is forty-seven fifty-two. The wastewater plant, there's a question there, which one do you think you would need? Do you know what you have there now?
I thought, didn't I tell you it was one and a half there?
I believe you did.
Yeah.
Okay, so, container size at the wastewater plant would be one-point-five yard container for forty-seven fifty-two and at the village highway department, a four-yard container for one-twenty-six fifty-three a month. And then that one would be used to also for the garbage that is collected in the streets here, so we need a bigger one out there. From the bins, from the waste bins.
And for the automatic conductors, right?
Yeah, all of the trash receptacles in the bins, they've been picked up and brought out to this month, the highway department.
When is that gonna...
We got a motion.
We made a motion.
Discussion.
When is that gonna start taking effect?
We can start next month, February first.
Seems like early, right?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, Lloyd.
That's it?
Contact from Welsh.
Aye, well.
You're done now?
Yes.
No, I can answer my question about the...
No, you're not done.
Oh.
Still got that.
Well, yeah, we just got this in our folder. It's, where is it? Here, there's a... The estimate for the, for the maintenance of this generator outside here from protective power systems. So Mike Wolf informed me that this has never been tested for load bank, which means a... Do you know, Jim, what they do? Put a big load on it, make sure it works. So there's an estimate here for six-hundred-and-fifty dollars and then also the yearly service, I believe this is.
It's just, that's for one year, right?
Yeah.
Can you make all of this?
So I make a motion to accept this for protective power systems.
In a second? Any discussion?
How often do they recommend the, to test it on their own?
Well, Mike says they've never done it, I don't know how long it's been there. It's been there before, I would say, five years, six years ago. I could find out.
Well, the generator's probably been there since the load.
Yeah.
Same generator?
Well, I don't know, it's the same one, probably got a backup generator.
But they get, they get it running.
It runs every week. It starts up and cycles through, you know?
Yeah.
But it doesn't have a load on it either.
I could find out how long they recommend that's gonna be for the load.
Well, we have power outage, isn't there?
Well, when I say local, you know, normal lights being on and stuff like that, it's not like it's really blocking it down and that's when they do a load bank, that's what they do, they really plug the thing down and straighten it. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, Lloyd.
I don't know, you wanna ask me a question?
I wanna ask about the, about the bridge there, our Asher. We, I know there was a letter went out to...
Sent a letter out to the regional guy down there in DOT and haven't heard a word back yet. When did he send that, a couple of weeks ago, at least?
Yeah.
Yep, we have the billboard, he's the head of that whole DOT area, you know, from here down all the way down to the university. Gotta wait to get back from there.
How about some kind of temporary?
More brown?
Well, something. So the last time, just a piece of snow fence or something on the north, northeast side it would be.
You guys get together, you guys get together and go down there and talk it over.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at it, yeah.
Okay.
We'll bring Mike down here.
I like the plan.
Okay.
Anything else? Any questions? Except for plant or for street? Plant, what do you got?
I wanted to talk about the, just a little bit about the pedestrian and bicycle plan that came out from the county. They just speak about our sidewalk study and, you know, suggest that those improvements are needed, which is good because we went through the detailed sidewalk study and it's like we could get the informator of the county on maybe to do, fund for some sidewalk improvements. So they're making, they're blessing our, you know, phase one and phase two recommendations. But also they talked about getting bicycle routes to Red Hook with the Rhine, Rhinebeck Historic District. In particular, they mentioned a potential bicycle boulevard on Parsonage South and/or Mulberry Street in Village of Rhinebeck, which would be about one-point-three miles total. And I looked up the bicycle boulevard and basically it's like a big logo on the street every two-hundred-and-fifty feet or so, there's no lane or anything. We did vote to have a shoulder on South Parsonage, but someone should kind of coordinate this maybe and talk to the county and see what they really wanna do. I mean, Mulberry Street's in pretty decent shape.
They had that sense of correspondence and I think I shared this with you guys the last month or the month before.
Yeah.
Actually shared with you by email, was, that they're, we're talking about perhaps doing a pilot program here in Rhinebeck.
Right, that's what they're suggesting.
And I said, you know, we're certainly willing to listen to anything they have to say as far as that, you know, I said, you know, we can't make a determination till we know what the facts are, so. We have, I, I haven't heard anything back from them yet.
So this is the draft of the county plan and they're asking for suggestions before this draft gets finalized. I don't see any problems with it, I don't know if you guys wanna go over and make some suggestions.
I looked over, I mean, I don't have any issue with it.
Yeah, but...
Maybe I should be the point with Mike Wolf and Pete Dunn on what this all means and what we could do to improve stuff.
Those only specific streets?
Right.
It's finalized by, by the county and that's it, it's only those streets, Parsonage and Mulberry?
We can do what we want, but yeah.
So you're gonna strike?
Well, no, I should also say there's recommendations for Nine and Mill and, Mill and Montgomery.
I think it's just...
You know, where crossovers with Nine and then also, like if you take, what is that, Old Post Road or something, there's gonna be something in there.
Well, my question is, there's already designated bike trails.
Right, and that's...
A lot of these town roads.
They were motivated by, by the Red Hook and Rhinebeck Greenway Committee with, that was working with the Winnicky Land Trust, Hudson River Valley Greenway and others, they developed a historic district bike hype trail. So this would...
Like a flower shop, there's one of those bike signs right out in front of there.
Right, right. So this would be part of, part of the network, presumably so.
Maybe it's an effort to take bicycle traffic off of Route Nine and run it through the village streets.
Yeah.
Where there's less traffic, you know?
Right.
I don't know if you wanna...
Yeah, I wanna take the initiative on that.
I'm not gonna argue with it.
And I think for us, it's just striping and putting these little bicycle characters and stuff, so it isn't like, maybe responsive.
But Mike, Mike pointed out to me that there wasn't room for, you had wanted walkways on both sides of South Parsonage, right?
I wanted a shoulder.
Yeah, both sides, right?
Yeah, a little two or three foot. I tasted off, it was the same as, as Noble.
So he said there's only room for one side, he believes.
He and I agreed to go...
We need, we need to do some measurements, yeah.
He and I agreed to look at it, but there's no point in doing it this time.
Yes. What I would, what I would do was, I would wait. I would try and figure out if it can be done, you know, the plan on what we want to do. And that way, if we had to go out and get estimates or stuff like that, we can be prepared to be able to do this next round of time, whether that's a schedule, you know?
Okay, well, this is gonna be part of the bike boat, or is it possible?
If they do that.
If they do.
You know, we don't know what the timeframe is on that. That might be a conversation worth having with the county, you know? It's how far out do you want this, if you're gonna do it? If you're gonna do your pilot, you know, and discuss with the fact we're talking about, uh, doing some pedestrian lanes and striding down there right away. Okay? Uh, planning and zoning, the only things I have is just, everybody's aware that the Northern Dutchess Hospital finally got their approval. So, uh, that project is gonna move forward. They can bring you up, speed on Rhinebeck Gold's Place, uh, you know, Banta's had filed an article seventy eight on that. And what they have, has decided to do is just put a new application and then start over, uh, so that they can just get moving forward on this. So that's kind of where that, that is right now. They're gonna go back to the, uh, come back to the planning board with an application and then they'll go back to the zoning board and start over, basically start over. They felt that was the most expeditious way for them to move along. So that's the only two updates I have, and of course, uh, forty seven West Market Street, uh, will be addressed at the zoning board this Thursday evening. Anything else on planning and zoning?
Just the, uh, well, we'll talk about the events code and fair ground zoning.
Yep.
Or we could talk about it now.
Well, I got it all down, I have these other business, so let's do it there. Police and court, everybody has the incident reports, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody got a copy of the... What is that? The radio?
In.
Had given me the annual report.
This one? This is?
Yeah. All right, thank you. I don't have any here this morning. How would you check?
No.
Foot hold on.
I don't want, yeah. I don't want you to record this.
You got the other page, guys? There was more than one page? Yeah.
I only got one page, so.
All right, well, I'll just point out what we have here. Total calls for service with the police department, uh, in two thousand thirteen was fifteen hundred and forty six, eleven hundred and eighty three of those in the village and three hundred and forty five in the town. And there were eighteen out of jurisdiction, which basically is an assistance call for another agency. Percent of change from two thousand twelve to two hundred, two thousand thirteen, total, there was a five point eight percent decrease. In the village, there was a point eight percent decrease, and in the town, a seventeen point one percent decrease. Out of jurisdiction, forty three point eight percent decrease. And that's all I can do because I don't have the second page. Do you got the other page?
I don't.
No, I don't.
Maybe it's misfiled in here. I'll go through this stuff and see if I can find anything else. Does anybody have any questions as far as police department? Okay, we'll move on to the next thing, and I'll sort through this paper. Dog report. Member, two thousand thirteen, it was a very quiet month, uh, as far as the activity with dogs. He has not picked up any dogs in the village. Has had calls of missing dogs or people finding dogs. Owners find their dogs before I do in most cases. That's all he has to report for now. Committee report, street commission, Howie?
Hey, everybody have the minutes from last week's tree meeting?
Yeah.
Just want to talk about this record of tree activity with, uh, one of the members, Brian Del Pizzo, is, is creating this spreadsheet, which I have a copy of here. And what this does is it records the trees that, requests that we have for tree removal or tree pruning. He's putting it on here and, um, we have like the property owner, the status, the address of it, and the results. I'm trying to find a seamless way to get this done because a few of the trees have sunk through the cracks and we want to get Lisa on a more seamless way of doing this. And, uh, John Westler is the new chairman of the tree commission, and he'd like to have a little meeting with us together and with Mike, just to go over this to give... So you, no, Lisa, so Lisa has some recommendations on how, because she's involved with this a lot.
I want to just say, I, I think it's a great idea, you guys could use that spreadsheet.
We have somebody in that know, who knows how to do this.
That's great.
And, um, yeah, it's supposed to make it a lot easier for us to keep track of these trees. So, I don't know if you guys are available Thursday? Around two o'clock, Jim?
No.
No?
I don't work today, but...
Okay, we'll do it another day.
I saw John this morning, CEO, I mean, I'm the one, I'm the lead, but I'm off my schedule. You don't need me there to do this.
No, we don't, Lisa's the one, most of them.
This is just a matter of figuring out how the spreadsheet's gonna be set up.
Right.
What Lisa's gonna have to do.
Okay, Lisa, maybe we'll stop by this Thursday at two o'clock. Yeah, you'll be there. Call me if I don't show up. So anyway, there's a lot of information here on how this is supposed to work, if you guys want to make any questions about it. Now, the spring tree planting is, um, I believe it's April twenty eighth, it's, uh, our good day. We have a list of where we're going to plant these trees. And Jim, we have to ask you permission, this is in Stortini Drive, the area near the retention pond, want to plant three trees there?
What do you have to ask me?
Because you're the representative, you're the village, you are the village.
No, I'm not, this board is the village.
Okay, so then I have to, I have to make a motion to the board?
Come on.
What do you think? Okay, we'll just stop there. I make a motion that we plant two red oaks and one tulip, tulip tree, near the retention pond on forty five Stortini Drive.
Second?
In.
Your second?
Yeah.
All right, is there a discussion?
It looks like they wanted another oak at the other retention pond. The, uh...
I think that's the one on my end there. Uh, I, I think, well, I like, well, I love trees. And I planted a lot of trees my own, but then I think about this retention pond and then I have trees there that check, uh, shed their leaves. Uh, we're gonna block up the drainage system there. Now, if you would want to put spruce trees on there, that's a different, kind of fish, they, they prefer that, you know, say, go for it, but I, I would be really concerned about the, uh, trees.
That's a good point.
With a lot of leaves and the, the stuff goes in there, goes in there, and then gets poured into, into drainage system.
Though it arguably, argument could be made on any old street with catch bases, but I understand where you're coming from. It's about a very odd point.
Although that is the lowest point.
It's the lowest point in the...
It's not running anywhere, it's running to it, so.
Any ideas to help soak up the water, with all these trees over there?
Well, if that's one, then, then you won't put, uh...
Bullocks?
Little trees in there, but they, they, they're really... So I, I would support, uh, new trees, not other trees.
Okay, we have a, we have some time to finalize this.
I just have a question in general on those three trees, but...
Yes.
Doesn't tree commission target a specific area of the village every year?
Yeah, we do it different quadrants. Try to do different quadrants and then save time, because we're all there.
So I mean, there's...
But we do have a few trees outside the quadrants that...
It looks like there's twenty three trees in this one little neighborhood.
Right.
Which I would agree, reduce the trees, but then the whole rest of the village is only, like, five.
Beautiful. In different quadrants.
Is that, I mean, is that a quadrant or a...
Yeah. What do you mean?
Yeah, the quadrant has to...
Yeah, I can add nothing to it.
Uh, no, 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 not a lot of people are, it's, it's good, I'm saying the quadrant has to cover more than just little...
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's like, I don't know, we got, we have a map, I don't have it with me. If you look at a village map, we just kind of go...
I'm just curious how that, so I don't know.
And there's a few leftovers, um, some like, also there's different times of the year when we can't get specific trees. Like, some of these trees we can't get in the fall, so, like Oak Street, we put one over there, which is an oak tree. I don't think, I don't think we can get that tree in the fall, so that's why we're doing it this spring. We do two plantings a year, one in the spring and one in the fall. And we're always looking for volunteers, uh, so if anybody's available, again, I believe it's April twenty eighth, I don't have the calendar in front of me, that's Saturday.
That's just Stortini over there.
So we have an open motion here.
Got a face discussion?
Should we hear back from the tree commission about France's concern?
Yeah, we, I'm just, I'm gonna have, I can email everybody tomorrow and...
That's the only thing we have to approve, right, or...
Yeah. Right. No, my motion was to...
We have a motion inside, a motion on the floor to put three trees down, all right? So we have to have some type of a vote here, be yea or nay.
No, no, they're specific trees.
Okay, are we gonna make?
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
You have specific trees.
Yeah, there's specific trees listed here.
Right, so we have to vote on that, and that's not what you want to approve or approve, correct? So we're either gonna have a yea or a nay vote?
Okay. So we're done with discussion?
Discussion's all done. All in your favor, all the trees, how we specify, re- repeat it again?
Two red oaks and one tulip tree.
If there's an oak at the other retention pond too.
But that's somebody's house.
Well, it's, but that's where they want it.
We, this, this is this motion, correct? All in your favor? Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it doesn't pass.
Oppose for how?
Go back to the tree commission.
Okay.
Discuss a blue and some red. And you, you understand that, you know, we have concerns about the...
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah, that's a good question. And then I'll, also I'll talk about the other one, near the other retention pond. That's a, somebody's specific...
If they want something to beautify it in some way, instead of just having it be open in the next time, maybe add it or something. Box it, add it or something. Okay?
Yeah.
What else you got on tree commission?
Well, we're over budget on the tree takedown, five thousand nine hundred dollars, and we also, we're a little bit more than that because we had an emergency situation on another tree. So, um, last month you had said, look at some of my budget lines, see where I get some of the money. And one of my budget lines is storm drainage, uh, which we put a lot of money aside, up to forty thousand for storm drain repair. We'd use twenty one hundred eighty seven dollars, so we have thirty seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars, but we were gonna probably use that, I think that was for the West Market Street area.
Well, we were gonna use that for East Chestnut too, and we were, we had an offsetting revenue on the chip side. Which we're not getting, because we're not chips eligible. We had forty, whatever it is, forty five grand on expenditure, and then we get forty five grand on chips, on chips around my side. So it's... In my mind, that one ain't out there.
Right. So would that be a good spot to?
No, if you don't have that money, because you're not gonna get the chips back from offset.
But my question is, are we gonna do the work this year, because it's kind of contingent on...
No, we don't have it.
Right, it's Village Place.
Yeah, we don't have the money to do Chestnut Street, we know that. Now, Village Place, we're in a situation over there where hopefully if they get their site approved, we can partner with them. And they're gonna help us out with that. But that's not finalized, because they still have to go through their site. Okay, all right, we have, we have a plan and design, so that, yeah, we can work with them as well. But we can't work with them to build it, we don't have the money to do that either, unless we build more into the budget for two thousand fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, then my other option is from, which we can't do right now because it's no removal department, if there's any, any, uh, of that money left in a couple months.
You don't know if they can watch.
I'm not saying we're taking it now, I'm just saying wait a couple months. So for the meantime, we're not taking any more trees down, unless it's an emergency situation, correct? Okay, um... Uh, you guys all read this? Okay.
See, I have the red oak.
Okay. John Westler would like to go for a ten thousand dollar grant to the Frost Foundation, now, and this is out of the purview of the tree commission, which is noted here. To hire landscape designer to create plans to redesign and renovate Crystal Lake Park. We just, we talked about this on the tree commission, we know it's not our job to do that, but we're gonna go to the, um, CAC on town and to the Rhinebeck Town Record Committee to ask them for their help with this. Just to keep you updated on that. That's it?
It'd be interesting to work on that project.
Okay, good, I'll put your name down.
Unless I want to be the lead agency for it.
Okay.
This is for...
I'm not specifically leading park.
Yeah.
All right.
Actually, it's still, as I was...
Website, okay. Anybody got anything? Energy controls?
No.
Energy consumption here in the pit holes. Okay, resolution to go to bid for crosswalks. Uh, as everybody's aware, we had received a community block grant from the county, uh, last year, to tune to about forty nine thousand dollars. Uh, we have bid stuffs already, so I am going to make a motion that we advertise for bid for construction of the sidewalks in the intent of constructing them as soon as weather breaks and springtime. There's a second, any discussion?
Where's the, uh, the one that's by the M and T Bank, where's the one on the...
West Market Street is gonna be, uh, just to the west of Garden Street, in front of the bagel shop, and then going across towards Beacon Arms parking lot. Any other discussion?
Yeah, um, person that owns the bank property is, is, would like to, uh, fix his sidewalk.
I have sent the word, I don't know all of that, but if they go to the planning board, they need to be aware that we are gonna be doing some sidewalk, uh, crosswalk construction there. So the planning board's aware of it if he comes in there.
Okay, to try to coordinate it all together.
Mm-hmm. I'll point him up the sidewalk in.
Right, they, they know about this, yeah.
Right, okay.
Where's it gonna link, is it the, between the two driveways, right from the back or...
It's to the south of the driveway going into the back.
Okay.
Yep, and then it goes across the street to Bob Williams' old building. So it's kind of a little bit in that, it's not straight across. And this is all, you know, DOT has already put it all, uh, you know, we were all ready to go out to bid on it last fall, but we had some obstacles, shouldn't say obstacles, we had some things we had to address with the county before we could advertise for bid, environmental review, had to go ship all, all that type of stuff. But the county has now said that we're good to go. Yeah, Kyle was involved, yeah, yeah. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, and we have a motion and a second, all in your favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, uh, I'll get Nancy Clark to, uh, give us all the stuff. Okay, next item is the Fairgrounds Rezoning Events Code discussion. Uh, hopefully we will be prepared to set a, uh, date for public hearings. Open it up for discussion.
Well, as far as the zoning district, I don't think there's any other, the red line, the version and the clean that was, uh, given to us from Neil, I think you guys are all in on that, right? And so there's no further changes on that?
Anybody?
Timmy forwarded all that stuff to us.
That's the zoning district, we'll have to...
Yeah.
Again, I have to recuse myself from the Fairgrounds zoning because my...
You have to refuse yourself from discussion.
Okay.
You have to refuse yourself from voting, you have any concerns about what's being proposed?
No.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
The, the let's code now, it's not very bright under here, I can't read as well, so...
Trying to save money.
Yeah. Yeah. It's-
Better?
Yeah. So Heath had concern about, and Heath and Howie, I believe, had concern about our definition of event in the, uh, events code that's provided by the city commission. So I came up with this-
Routine event, correct?
Uh, well, he wanted to have it for events for five hundred or more people.
Yeah, attach a number to it, five hundred seemed like a fair number that wouldn't tax the, um, ability to provide for safety.
So I had literally, someone asked me if this knitting circle would be considered bound under that.
Well, that's why I said in my email to you guys, if you had a number of five hundred people, this would eliminate the book signings of any clubs, the house parties, et cetera.
Okay, my concern, my concern would be, and Grant wrote a point about what, with four hundred ninety-nine people? Alright, four hundred fifty people. Or say a promoter wanted to come in, and, you know, we have to have a marathon come in, alright, and they, the first year, drew five, six hundred people, but say somebody comes in with a, an event similar to that, but we're only gonna have four hundred people. Yeah, it's gonna have an impact, because it's an event that's gonna use those streets and to require safety and police protection and things like that, but if we don't have a caveat in there that says they need to come to us, what do we do?
Well, they need to close streets.
Well, I'm not talking closing streets, we don't close streets. Keep the streets open, but police department assists. You know, some crossing.
They don't close any streets for the, any of those?
Yeah. Stay open.
Well, I picked five hundred because that's what the town has for their-
That's what I had in my initial draft, he had to go.
I'm not, I'm not worried about-
Man, I got that from research and-
I'm not worried about the mini club.
No, well, I have a hard time to, that, that false hypothetical, we have a hard time funding it, you know what I mean, I, I, I'm comfortable with either way.
And see, that's where I think the events code committee was coming from when they proposed this, was that any event needs to fill a paper workout, so that then gives the village board the ability to analyze what they're requesting and make a determination on what they need to go through. And to say that if it's less than five hundred people, you open a big, big window for four hundred ninety-nine to down. And not have any control over it. If you use a number for the threshold.
We could use a lower number for the threshold.
If, if the, the knitting club, or if the church bazaar wants to come in here and say, well, we're gonna have our bazaar, we need to fill out an application. That's not gonna happen, we're not gonna require that.
Yeah, well, you're still-
Well, ultimately, it's up to the village board.
Right.
But they're a change.
What was the, the board that, the, uh?
Yeah, village boards change, do you think that the village boards are gonna tell, uh, a knitting club that they can't have a function?
I don't know, I really don't know.
Wait a second, we have events now that require approval, no matter how many folks, just because they use public facilities. We have Sinner Claws, we have the, uh-
Memorial Day Parade.
Memorial Day Parade. We have the Run, the Halloween Parade.
Chamber of Commerce.
Where, where's our actual situation where someone has denied these people the right to have an event?
Well, then, we don't have an events code, now when we do, it's gonna be another let, another law.
But no, no, they have to come to us for those events, because they're public facilities. So that's why I say it's-
I just don't like the message we're sending there. You can have fifty people, like something, you gotta fill out a form to have an event.
No, no.
Well, how do they know, because there's no number?
Because the village board, this village board, right, I mean, you're right, village board's gonna change, do you think, do you honestly think that somebody would stop an event with fifty people?
I don't know, I really don't know.
I don't understand why you would.
I'm asking you, would you?
No, I wouldn't, that's why, that's why I want a number in there.
Alright, and you can't speak for anybody else, I realize.
Yeah.
Okay, but I think we're reasonable people, my question would be, is if somebody's on this village board in the future, that wants to stop a fifty-person event like a knitting club, why the hell did they go elect it in the first place?
I can't speculate on that, but all I know is, a law has a law, if you have a number in there, you can go by that.
Well, and I'm telling you, five hundred is not a good number.
Well, what's a good number?
I could go either way with that. What was, I wanna get, I wanna get it done, we could go with two fifty.
How many places in the village can accommodate five hundred people, or four hundred people? It's a limited number of places that can accommodate this, unless it's an outside.
Well, but somebody with a big backyard, that's outside, that's what, that's-
Let me ask Andy right here while he's here, how many, when they have weddings at the fairgrounds, how many people?
It can range from a hundred to four hundred.
But it, it, yes, in the events person, I mean, is-
Mike, Mike, I, I don't know how far I can go here, Chris Chesney would be a perfect example for me, if somebody popular dies in this town. And let's just say, you, you're gonna have two, three hundred people go away. Is, what does Chris do? I mean, it's regular business, it happens every day.
Well, that's right, that's, that's not, to me, that's not an event, you know? I would, I would never say to Chris Chesney, you know, somebody popular dies, no, you can't have that funeral or that wedding.
You gotta allow the permit.
And anybody that would say that to him, like I said, doesn't belong on a village board to begin.
Well, it's still a non-routine activity.
How do they get off?
So if it's a permitted zoning, then it's a routine activity within that district typically, although if you have a fair, that's not routine, and-
I think what we have to-
Parade is never routine in any-
I think what we have to keep in mind here is that, what we're, we're talking about here trying to fix and address is public safety. Okay, so that if somebody is wanting to have, some, somebody is going to have an event, that draws four hundred and fifty people, and they're gonna hold it in this village that we're aware of it, and we make sure they have proper parking, we make sure they have proper sanitary facilities, we make sure that, uh, uh, those types of things are addressed. Okay, so stop and think about it, think of a property within this village that has a big enough yard to have an event like that, think of Hawk Hills property. Okay?
Kathy Hammer.
Well, it's in the village, so it doesn't fall under our herd, but, case in point is a big enough property, uh, somebody like Lou Turpin. You know, he's got a big backyard, and there's properties in this village that can hold two hundred, two hundred and fifty people, three hundred people, four hundred people very easily. Yep, are the majority of them that way? No.
If these guys are more comfortable with putting two fifty in there, I'm comfortable not having, I wonder what's the original, uh, wording?
What that, that the committee came up with?
They didn't put a number.
They didn't put a number.
They said it was up to us.
The word event shall mean a non-routine activity within the village that brings together an assemblage or gathering of a group of people.
That sounds good to me. I wouldn't put a number in there.
So here's my definition, uh, after hearing input from three, from Heinz and, and Howie and, and Heath, the word event shall mean an arranged, non-routine activity within the village that brings together an assemblage or gathering of a group of X amount, X or more persons. So we put two hundred fifty, I tracked the same language, but I added, so we could put two fifty in there.
And again, the, the, the events code committee's intent here was, is that if somebody's gonna have an event, they come talk to the village. So if the village is aware, and the village has the option of making requirements of any upon their event.
It's true.
What's the number of people that we can have in the village that doesn't stress the, um, public safety? How many people we get at the farmer's market every Sunday in the summer?
Well, it's, it's not a mass gathering, because they come and they go.
Well, how many people do you think are on the town lot at one time, or how about if they have a big swimming, and I know a part that's in the village, but the parking lot, I mean?
And then, we have events with hundreds of people.
And again, there depends upon the facility, you know? Uh, direct park, there's room for people to park, but you're not overflowing into the streets, those types of things.
Farmer's market is probably will happen if there are any age applications beginning of the season, I don't, there's not a problem with that.
Well, and the thing is, is that the farmer's market has a lease agreement with us where everything's addressed already.
Yeah.
But I would just use that as an example of saying, if at any given time there's two hundred people there, and that's rotating all day long, do we have to have, do we put extra police officers on that day? I don't think so, I mean-
Not for the farmer's market, we don't know.
The events code gives this discretion to your, uh-
But it's all about public safety, what is the number?
There is no number, it depends on the-
That we can handle.
It depends, yeah, it depends upon the event, the number of people, where it's gonna be held, you know?
Right.
The factors, the factors surrounding, what type of an event it is, you know?
And the events code seems to structure all that in, talks about taxing infrastructure stuff.
Yeah, what about, what about the, uh, cooking channel on the come here? We'll do some filming.
And again, they make an application, we have the approval, and we say what has to be required, based on what they're asking for.
Is there a formal application for that though, or someone has written a letter and we say it's-
We're gonna have a formal application.
No, it's a, it's an exhibit to the events code.
No, that, that, the cooking channel thing, that's a, that's an event?
Yeah. Yeah, as long as we don't say it has to be five hundred or more. If you say five hundred or more, no, then they don't have to do anything.
That's why I think that's ridiculous, ten people coming for a cooking channel thing, we gotta have them fill out an event form?
What happens if they want, uh, parking spots, they want police, that's those types of things.
We're doing that now, we have to decide.
If we don't, if we don't have that, how are they committed to whatever they want?
They told us we're not doing it, we have to make the-
I'd like to see a number in there.
What if I wanna have a bouncy house in my backyard for my kid's birthday party, and I have like twenty, twenty-three?
You're going down the knitting circle path.
Exactly, that's what I'm talking about. And once there's four guys on the board who just don't like me for some reason, so you can't have your birthday party for your kids.
I, I actually don't favor any number right now, I think-
I just don't think it's gonna be happy.
We're never gonna come up with something that's perfect, and I think you have to, you have to, I think you have to understand that people need to be reasonable about this, and you're worried about what's gonna happen in the future, you know, I can't predict the future, you know, and I can't say who's gonna get voted into office, but I think that the people that would be elected and sit at this table would have, have some modicum of sense. That they wouldn't say that, no, you can't have a bouncy house in your yard, and, no, you, you can't have your knitting circle, or you can't have your church bazaar, that's not what a community's about, you know?
You know, we're, we, we're sworn to uphold the health, safety, welfare, all that stuff, and we, so we're, nobody's here to kill businesses.
So what's wrong with two hundred fifty?
We're the ones that look out for both sides, we're, that's our role, is to look out for both sides, it's not the-
Two hundred and fifty, that's what you want, you're two hundred and fifty.
I'll, I'll give you a case in point, somebody want to have a wedding in their yard, okay, and they, they have the facility to do it, alright, shouldn't they have to go to their neighbors?
Yeah.
And get a letter of endorsement from their neighbor?
Yeah, that's a, that would be a common sense thing.
Okay, a common sense thing, but there's nothing common about sex, that's the problem.
You guys, whatever you got.
Okay, so what I'm saying to you is, alright, I'm gonna have, you're gonna put a number here, five hundred, I'm gonna have a wedding with three hundred people. We don't have anything in place to make me meet any requirement, so I can do whatever I want, and you can't hold me accountable. That's the situation you get from it, you know? Do we wanna say no to somebody if they wanna have a wedding with three hundred people? No, we wanna make sure that their neighbors are aware, we wanna make sure there's adequate parking, that they're not gonna cause a problem, you know, what are the sanitation facilities gonna be? Those types of things. But, you know, if you put a number, flat number of five hundred in there, anybody who falls below that doesn't have to talk to you.
Go ahead, I, I wanted to, I wanted to get one comment.
I'd like to see a number, whatever, you know, we vote, we'll vote on this, we'll vote on it.
We had numbers, smallest fifty for sanitation, for traffic, we had fifty, for, just for sanitation purposes, I was interested, something, I don't remember, so you couldn't put fifty in there, just put something.
That's too low.
I think as a Christmas party, we want fifty people.
Where do, where do Audrey's wedding party, do I want fifty people?
Yeah, so I need a-
An indoor party is a routine activity.
There's some people outside.
Well, I'd like to see five hundred, but if you guys want less.
What if we, Jim, what if we put two fifty in there, just in, just for a couple of years and see how well it works?
I, you know, my firm, I'm a firm believer in this all one, we asked a group of people, we took a cross-section of this community, alright, and representation from every aspect of this community, and we charged them with doing a job, and they came to us and presented us with something that they agreed upon, and apparently not all of them did agree upon it, a hundred percent, but they brought this to us and said to us, this is what we believe is best for our community, and now we're telling them, no, we don't agree with you. Well, it's more now, so I, I have a problem there, and I have a problem with saying that anybody wants to come into this community and has less than five hundred people, doesn't have to talk to us, and can do whatever they want, I do not agree with that. Do I wanna stop people from having things? No, I just wanna make sure that we're aware, we know what's gonna happen, and if we have to address something, we can.
I like the number because it adds some level of objectivity to the process, everything else is subjective, what's routine, and, and, all the language in there is not definitive of as to what, what is and what, what isn't. And someone could argue that, well, those four hundred people don't have an impact, but these two hundred people do have an impact.
But, but to Jim's point, you have, you can't say, but you don't do it on that? I don't need a number, I don't, I don't think we need a number.
The whole idea is to stop something that could negatively impact the community. And number? You're gonna say, okay, if it's less than five hundred people, it's not gonna negatively impact the community, and you have no idea what the, what the effects are gonna be to leave that happens.
If it's an open ended no number, and we go with it, how many events do you think we average in the village per year?
It's in the report, a lot of that is in the, it's charity community report.
But it doesn't include-
We're not gonna, it's not-
The slippery slope of-
We're not gonna, why would we, we're not gonna add on stuff. We're not gonna add on a pancake breakfast in this room, which has a commercial kitchen for pancake breakfast, you know, in a public space, that-
But, but why do you think it's a slippery slope?
No, I'm saying it doesn't, uh, doesn't address that, it doesn't address the knitting clubs, you know, I say, how many events do we have a year? It doesn't a- address all those little things that now would be under the definition an event.
Pancake breakfast, would that be an event?
It's not an event.
Yes.
This room has a vacancy when-
No, like in the Legion of the Boy Scouts, have a pancake breakfast.
They have, uh, they have, uh, like the banquet room, or whatever you call that.
So that's not considered an event?
The floors. It has no, unless it was spilling out of doors, the Halloween parade is.
What if you have a wedding with a hundred fifty people and your reception's in this room?
I don't know what the fire code is, but you probably can't have a hundred fifty people in this room.
Hundred and sixty.
Hundred and sixty, right there on the wall.
So it's over there?
Do they have to get approval anyway?
What if it's a hundred people at, uh, at the Legion, or the Church of Messiah, or someplace that has a hall? How about these-
Planting the religion.
In my mind, no.
No, that's not it?
No.
No, but when you pass this, if you pass this law without a number, people are gonna question, they're not gonna know. People are not gonna have events, because they're, they're gonna think they have to go through this rigorous process of-
All they have to do is ask a question.
Well, a lot of people won't, they won't even bother, they won't, they'll go someplace else.
What Henry and Johnny were saying, what we're saying is, it's a basic-
Town Rhinebeck's had an events code since nineteen seventy-one.
Right.
Okay, I've got a number on it, doesn't it, how many events have been stopped?
I don't know, I'm not-
Have people gone elsewhere? Rhinebeck's a pretty popular destination for having stuff, isn't it?
The village.
Doesn't that code have a number on it?
Yeah, five hundred.
They tend to not enforce that code.
It's not a good selling point.
It's too strict.
Yeah, right, because those didn't enforce this.
It's too strict, it's just, this is different. That thing required you to have a survey, I mean-
If somebody wants to make a, a change to this, they need to make a motion.
I make a motion?
Wait, I'm not done, these, there's similar things, there's one other thing I wanna change.
Well, you're gonna have to do each one of them individually, you're not, can't do them blanket, so if we wanna, if we're gonna finish up on the number, let's make a motion and get it.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion, we put a, a number of five hundred people.
Wait, maybe we should talk this out with Heath first, I'll send it.
We can discuss, we then will have discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we have a number of five hundred people before the event code would be activated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is gonna be difficult, because I- This is gonna be difficult because I want, I can see that those two want zero and, I don't, I wanna be, I could go either way with it, so it's like whoever does their motion first is gonna get it. Is that really how we?
It's a democracy, and we need to move along on this, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here, hold up the events code in the fairgrounds zone for six more months until we can come to an agreement on the number.
Jim, we're not doing that.
We've been, we've been talking about this for over two years.
I understand.
We had an events code committee that brought us finding, and now here we are trying to get this to a public hearing, and we're still talking about a number. So let's finalize it. It's a democracy, let's take a vote on it, and we move on. How many, how many hours do you wanna discuss it? How many days do you wanna discuss it? Any more discussion of it? All those in favor of the number of five hundred people in the events code, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's free. I voted. I said aye, opposed to the five hundred. If anybody wants to make a motion to another number, they can.
Okay, I make a motion to have a number of two hundred and fifty people before the event code would be activated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
That one passes. Two hundred and fifty's the number. Let's move on. What's next?
Okay. I wanted to include, um, this language in section one twenty-one dash three D to read, "The Board of Trustees may, comma, if it deems it necessary and appropriate, comma, request more information from an applicant to require that, blah, 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 for all that additional information." What it used to say was in its sole discretion. So this is the same standard you have in all our, or zoning review, and it's, that, it prevents, prevents us from being more arbitrary and capricious in, in asking for more materials from people. Because it has to be necessary and appropriate for what we need to do. This was a request from, uh, the Fairgrounds attorney.
Make a motion.
So I make a motion that we revise section one twenty-one dash three D to read that way. Do you understand what I mean? Just request more materials.
Read, read it again for the record branch, so everybody's clear on it.
Let me just tell you the way it used to read.
It's just a duplication of the standard language that's used in all the other codes.
That's right. I'll, I'll just read the way I want it to be. "The Board of Trustees may, comma, if it deems it necessary and appropriate, comma, request more information from an applicant to require that." In other words, to get more information from applicants.
But it's only gonna be on events with two hundred and fifty people in there?
Right.
Otherwise, clear? So you got a motion, right?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
You said the fairgrounds will allow this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that, does that mean you're gonna go for it?
I just wanna, I didn't know what you said, because you said it's like-
Okay, were you, we're good?
Yeah.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted.
And then the last thing is, I just wanted to know if we, if we needed to do a seeker on the events code, but Rich isn't here.
I don't know, he's on his way. He sent me a text a little while ago, so he should be here very soon. We have the, uh, short form is done. So, uh, part two, he has, he's, said he can take care of it, you, you tend to do it, so.
But that was for the zoning code, the zoning code, not the-
Uh, zoning code, yeah. Anything else? Any other changes?
I don't know anything about that.
Anybody wants made to this events code?
You're gonna do the same number?
Well, I just wanna know, I, I sent Rich an email, um, asking how the, the events code would affect the fairgrounds. John Worth, who was the chairman of the, uh, events code committee, is also a lawyer. He told me activities at the fairgrounds would be regulated under the new proposed fare rezoning law, and the events code would not affect this, what you're telling me the events code will affect the, uh, fairgrounds zone, I mean.
What we have to keep in mind here is that, I think it's fair to say every event at the fairgrounds falls under mass gathering anyway. So that overrides anything that we're doing here. Five hundred's a number that triggers that, correct? And, or five thousand's the number that triggers that. So, uh, any of the large gathering events there, mass gathering takes place, they have procedures they have to follow based on mass gathering law.
So they don't have to come?
No, we still have our issues.
We will-
Our own--
Basically, what the, the fairgrounds will do is they'll fill out a piece of paper that tells us what events there happen.
Yeah.
Alright, and then we take a look at it, and because they have their policies and operations, procedures with parking, sanitary trash, all of that type of stuff, alright, it's gonna be an easy sign off for us.
I mean, they couldn't-
What we will have the right to do is that this event is over two hundred and fifty people, and we deem it to be an, an event that's inappropriate or could be detrimental to the safety, health, and welfare of the community, we will say no. I'll leave it at that.
Since I've been on the board, we've worked with the fairgrounds to change the weight limit on parsonage, the fireworks, and the gate ingress. It's because we get along with that.
When they have an event, what about the existing events they have now? Do they have to reapply every year?
Why not?
They let, they give us notification of what their schedules might be for the season, guys.
Did you see how simple the application form is? It's an exhibit to the events code?
I mean, basically, they do this now, most of the time, because they need us to close down moderation.
They write a letter?
Yeah.
Did we determine a fee? Uh, by the, this is not a fee. Just submit the application, don't they?
We haven't put a fee in place, and there was a very strong feeling when we went through this original, uh, thing in November of two thousand and eleven that we would be, if we put a fee in place, that we would make it too cost prohibitive for a lot of the organizations such as churches, Boy Scouts, blah, 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 to hold it up.
I thought I saw a fee somewhere, that's what I was asking for.
So the events code won't affect the fairgrounds? They, I mean, they're already doing the things that we're gonna be reinforcing.
So define and effect for them, what do you mean by effect?
Well, if they're, if they have, they have their Sheep and Wolf Festival, which they've had for years. They have to come before us and apply for that every year?
They tell us at the beginning of the year, here's our schedule for the year, and here's our events.
Right.
Alright, are you gonna say no to Sheep and Wolf Festival?
No.
Are you?
No.
Are you?
No.
No, but I'm just asking if they're gonna be under, are they gonna be under any other regulations that they don't, that they don't have right now?
No.
Except, it's a one-page application, they can attach a schedule of activities and incorporate their safety plans by reference to, you know, the binder book or whatever, and it's-
I maintain all along, having, the fairgrounds is a least of our worries when it comes to staging events. It's the other things that happen, that we don't have any knowledge of, those elements we need to know about, we need to worry about. Fairgrounds does an excellent job of managing their events.
Well, I know, and that's what we say, this board says, but as you see, people move into this town, and they don't wanna expand the hospital, and then they wanna do this and that, so who says?
Well, that's, yeah, actually, that is-
You know, I'm having to sit here and pretend like I have a crystal ball in front of me. I'm talking about now. And I'm talking about what we feel is best for this community. That's what I'm talking about.
I didn't hear anyone say, I went to several of those zoning meetings, that they didn't want to ask for expansion. So I, I wanna be clear about, you know, the interests of concerned, you know, constituents either.
And what I will offer is, again, is anybody that would be opposed to the fairgrounds being successful in this community, I would question how they got elected to the board in the first place, because the last thing this community needs is for the fairgrounds not to be successful. Need to help put Rhinebeck on the map, certainly.
No, I realize it. That's why, that's why I'm asking these questions.
I don't think they're gonna be affected. I don't know what world they're living in. Anything else?
We need a date.
For public hearing, I mean.
Right.
And I just want, we're gonna get these documents up for folks to see them pretty timely.
Our intent here was to finalize this, so with these minor changes we've made tonight, uh, we'll tune the document up, and then it's gonna be released, released to the public, so the public can view it, and then we'll set the date for the public hearing, and the public has a chance to come back in and comment on both the zoning and the events code again. And then it's up to the village board to decide how they progress from that point. Please, you got the calendar for this room? You know if there's anything in February? Perhaps late February, like maybe twenty-fifth? You wanna check downstairs, please? February twenty-fifth is a Tuesday?
Yeah, it's a budget maybe.
February twenty-fifth, is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good for you guys, Andy?
Yes, sir.
Seven P M. Okay. We're all done with that, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, next item then is correspondence. We have received an invitation from Northern Dutchess Alliance, they're having their annual, uh, breakfast meeting, February twenty, or February sixth, I'm sorry. Uh, seven thirty to nine at De Beekman Arms. Mayor K. Barber, the executive director of Dutchess County Tourism, is gonna be the keynote speaker. And they're gonna give out some awards to Dutchess Land Conservancy, Wayne Command Trust, and Dutchess County Planning Federation. If anybody interested in attending this. Uh, we are members of the Board of Dutchess Alliance, but it does cost fifty-five dollars per person to go.
Do you know what day that is?
I don't even tell you.
First day?
February sixth.
Hines and I were there last year.
I mean, I'm over the top. I don't think I have a conflict at this point.
Can we let you know?
No, we need to send this in, I think, because we should say here. January thirty-first is the RSVP date, so let me know.
Okay, I, I can, it's Thursday, it's okay.
How many do you want?
It's up to you guys, whether you wanna go or not.
Alright.
Brad?
I could go.
Or maybe you're mad at us, seeing as it's in our village?
I'm in.
Okay, we're in.
Yeah. What, what is our, uh?
Is it the fairgrounds? I know.
So Jim, are you gonna respond for all of us then?
Yeah.
I'll respond for everybody.
Okay. We need to, uh, pass a resolution stating the polling place for the upcoming village election. So please take notice at the board meeting of the village Board of Trustees for the Village of Rhinebeck, New York, on January fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. The final round of resolution was offered by Mayor James Reardon, and seconded by- The next general village election for officers will be held on Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. No person shall be entitled to vote in this election unless they are registered with the county board of elections, and on the county voter registration list, residents of the Village of Rhinebeck must register with the county board of elections by March seventh, two thousand and fourteen, to be included on the county list for the March nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen village election. If you are already registered with your county and your current address, you do not have to register with the county again to vote. The Village of Rhinebeck no longer holds a village registration day. Voting for the forthcoming election shall be conducted on Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, from noon to nine P M, at the Rhinebeck Town Hall, eighty East Market Street, Rhinebeck, New York. The town hall is handicap accessible. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go voting. Alright. We had gotten some correspondence from National Alliance on Mental Illness, and they're gonna be doing a campaign in May of two thousand and thirteen. A woman had asked me some questions about what they need to do to wanna kinda promote the event, from the Department of Banners and Signs, and I mentioned that Paula has, she's supposed to get the central ads and sign off and, uh, get back to it, you know, and I told her she needed to present a picture of what the sign would look like on suggested locations, so.
What is that, what is it?
Information. What's that?
What is this?
It's the National Alliance on Mental Illness, uh, Poughkeepsie address. They provide support, education, and advocacy to individuals and families affected by mental illness. They have state organizations in all fifty states, as well as Puerto Rico and the District of Columbia. So this is, uh, NAMI-Westchester partnership with the Stanford, Stanford Greenwich, launched their first mental health awareness campaign. So they wanna do something here in Rhinebeck, and I told her, you know, if they wanna do signage, let the process this. You wanna take a look at this? Uh, we have received a, uh, correspondence from Time Warner Cable. Apparently, there's a representative. He enclosed Time Warner's most recent franchise renewal document template for our review.
Yeah, that's the one I wasn't, that's the one that actually, they defined revenue as less than what we're getting already. So I didn't take it seriously.
They're gonna get blown up too.
Well, eventually, cable companies are gonna be out of business anyway, everything's gonna go away from that. I bet you we're in another ten years. Okay, uh, we have a letter of December sixteenth from Friends of Seniors of Dutchess County. Uh, they assist the older adult community, and they, uh, have expanded their services to Northern Dutchess to include Mile and Red Hook in Rhinebeck. Uh, they provide the older adult community with free basic support services, including non-emergency medical transportation, grocery shopping, uh, visiting, respite for primary caregivers, and telephone reassurance. Volunteers drive their own cars to take senior citizens. Uh, they have a low-cost van service in the town of La Grange in Pleasant Valley, now in its third year. And they're going to Monticello, the bar to bond in local shopping, drivers are volunteers. So this is just an informational, if anybody would like more information about this, at least we'll have the, uh, information downstairs. Uh, we got a thank you letter from Cecily Frazier. You didn't even mention that in your tree, or your report. We had honored Cecily, uh, with a plaque for her years of service as the chairman of the tree commission, so she has sent us a thank you card, and, uh- And, uh, she wanted to thank us for recognizing her, she feels so strongly about the importance of trees. It was her pleasure to serve as the, the village organizing and getting the tree commission started. I feel proud to have been part of this important project. I feel so happy and pleased to drive around the village and see the young trees growing as a legacy that will serve the village far into the future, making oxygen storing water, providing homes for birds and other insects and animals. Thank you for recognizing me, my service, sincerely Cecily Frazier. Uh, December eighteenth, letter from Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development. And, uh, this is information about Dutchess County recycle, and the information's downstairs, if anybody would like to see it. Uh, we had received on the twenty-third of December, a letter from John Collins. And it states, last week while commuting through the village of Ryan Beck, I witnessed a very dangerous situation. A person dressed in dark clothes was caught in the middle of the crosswalk south of the main intersection on Route Nine as cars passed by in both directions. I do not believe that the drivers were intentionally not stopping, but rather that it was extremely difficult to see this person until getting very close to the crosswalk. It was very dark over cast night, the roads were also wet. This combined with the person's dark clothing and the headlights of upcoming traffic, it was almost impossible to see that person in the crosswalk. I strongly urge that you consider improving the lighting at both of the crosswalks on Route Nine, North and South, in the middle of the village. Uh, what I would suggest there is that, if it was that dangerous of a situation, somebody had to be breaking the law. The cars were going through a red light, or the person was crossing on a no crosswalk, which I don't think any additional lighting is really going to help. Yeah, dark night, dark clothes, but, you know, the, the lights, and the traffic lights, and the pedestrian crossing lights are there for a reason. And people should use them the way they're intended to be used.
You might have been talking about the one by South Street. It just says south of the village, right?
No, it says just south of the traffic light.
Oh.
Middle of the crosswalk, south of the main intersection on Route Nine. I mean, certainly we could refer to this person to D O T, but it's not our jurisdiction anyway, because it's a safe area. Yes?
Well, they're asking for improvements in the lighting, so wouldn't that, yes?
We don't do those streetlights now.
Well, I don't know, we just, we don't give the lights.
No, I know, but I know you're trying to save energy with lights, maybe they, if they could put brighter lights where the crosswalks are.
I would say we need to refer this, this isn't in our jurisdiction. If it's a highway issue, it's D O T, if it's a lighting issue of Central Hudson.
Okay, now, on the other hand, we have building a new crosswalk, right?
We are gonna be putting a new crosswalk soon, yes.
So, so when, when this gets designed, let me make an consideration, you know, to think about it. Make sure that we have the right kind of lighting.
Well, what I would suggest is that we put them here, or we put them over by Paragon. We didn't add any lighting, but we do have reflective stanchions and reflective signs like every other community does.
Yeah, those are critical.
I would respond to this, gentlemen. Got a letter from David Talladega, who is the, um, vice president and manager of M and T Bank. And he sent this yesterday, Monday, January thirteenth. On several occasions, I have noticed individuals playing instruments on the corner of West Market and Mill Streets. Particularly a man playing the saxophone and another man playing the drum. Please know I use the term "music elusive." I am writing to you today, one thirteen, two thousand fourteen, at two twenty-five P M, because the drummer is currently stationed at the corner. I wish you could say what he is doing, his music, but I'm unfortunately just noise, loud noise. My office is approximately a hundred yards away from where the man is, and all I can hear is him paddling away. Keep in mind, it is January, and I am in a closed office with spacing here on. Is there nothing we can do to rid ourselves of this annoyance? Any help would be appreciated. David Talladega, vice president, commercial branch manager, Ryan Beck.
I think this drum, this has a little bag on the outside where it comes from, people put money in it.
They all do.
Uh, not the saxophone player.
Yeah, he does. He uses saxophone case, he'll play his own money in. They all do. That's what buskers do. Words of opinion.
This first started to happen on weekends.
You've had busker letters before?
Yeah, but this, this was only happening on weekends, now it's happening during the week, on Monday, this guy wrote this letter.
Uh, it happens all through the week. It's right there, it's in this.
Yes, I'm not here during the week.
I was, I don't know how we can enforce it or.
Well, we would have to adopt the law that Brian would busk. Right, Rick?
There's some section of the code.
Well, we don't, we've, we've already addressed this before, because it's come to our attention before, and we don't have anything in our code that prevents busking.
If it became a, I mean, these are isolated complaints, if it became more crowded, then.
And that's what I'm asking, listen, the village, does the village board feel the necessity at this time to take any action?
No, not for me.
I think it adds a little bit of character.
Yeah, it does.
It does, but I don't know about all week, you know, weekends are okay.
It used to be sound, it'd be nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? Well, done for now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Rydick Democratic Committee dated January thirteenth. Uh, they were requesting the use of this room for their caucus, twenty-fifth of January, which is a Saturday, nine thirty A M to one thirty A M. Uh, you need a motion to approve, please?
Need a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. A little follow-up, Howie, attention that we were over on Chestnut Street Saturday, cleaning that storm drain of the icy condition, and I had received a letter yesterday from Jill Kotchalk. And Kotchalk and Carol, I think you say it, Delkner? I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name, I apologize. But they just wanted to thank me, Howie, Michael, and the workers for helping us on Saturday afternoon. Without your good work, we surely would have been flooded. Please pass our thanks along to the rest of your team. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Creek was arising.
Thank you. Any other correspondence, Lisa, that you're aware of?
Play with.
Who you got? Yeah, I did have that one.
Where is it? I stole it from you.
Still on paper? Three hundred? Okay, uh, yeah, I didn't bring this, because this actually would be something we can talk about in our political cycle.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and, that's it? Anybody else have anything? Okay. Water and sewer adjustment times, Brad?
I think that's pretty good for Brad, because my adjustments are this adjustments.
Right.
We have eighteen new monitors and seventeen inch of finals. Uh, one of the finals was put in the wrong account, requiring.
Z N.
And, uh, one item, we had a, uh, one heated catch up, which was straightened out.
Right, Jerry.
And we had, uh, um, two items where we had the payment applied to the, to the wrong account. In one case, it was applied to the sewer account, and, you know, then have to go back to the, to the water account. Uh, removed penalty on one item for fifty-six dollars, and that was where that person was one day late, went through the mail, and had to send a, uh, electronic check for the rest of the day, so I, 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 I. Uh, there's one, two, three items that were not in the billing cycle, uh, they were, they were late, but I think this is just an internal journalism, has no effect on anything otherwise we, uh, oh, yes. We have another one applied to the wrong account. And, uh, a hundred and twenty-six dollars was, was applied to, uh, to the wrong account, and it should run to a four, 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 four thousand forty-nine account, and then thirty-one for forty-nine account, vice versa, so there's two adjustments on that. Otherwise, we have the same thing, as fewer, fewer adjustments, certainly for the sewer department, because they have, uh, a few. Maybe a motion to approve the, uh, adjustments, both sewer and water, as stated?
Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Minutes approval? September tenth, two thousand thirteen? Addition, additions, corrections? Make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. September twenty-third? Addition, additions, corrections? I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. October eighth? Any addition, additions, corrections? I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. November eleventh? Any addition, additions, corrections? I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? So voted. December twenty-third?
Uh, one second, four, December, December twenty-third, where's it? I, I don't have the December twenty.
I haven't finished it yet. She was gonna finish it yesterday, and, uh, I came in this morning, she had called in sick, and I asked Lisa if she knew whether they were finishing, and she said no, they weren't up, so.
Okay. The December twenty-third one said that I seconded their motion to adjourn.
He wasn't there.
I wasn't here. Did you call yourself? Did you make the correction, the unamenaged motions for the fires?
Okay, December twenty-third, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Stay.
And that's all we have for minutes at this point. Lisa, please see that, take that, so, all right? Uh, vouchers are gonna be downstairs. Uh, we need to go to executive session, I need a motion to go to executive session, please?
Make a motion to go to executive session?
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn executive session, please?
I make a motion to adjourn executive session.
Second.
Any all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Any motion to adjourn regular meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn regular meeting?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you, everybody.